I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Selectmen have just come out of the paperwork review and will now go into our meeting agenda. The first item on the agenda is review of items for consent. In the consent folder tonight, there are minutes of April 14th, 2014. Payroll manifests for the sum of $45,181.41. Accounts payable manifest to $45,050.78. The reappointment of Sharon Harding Reed as treasurer. The reappointment of Deborah Hogan-Camp as deputy treasurer. Veterans tax credit application approval. Land use change tax warrant for MAP 10, Lot 77. Timber tax levy for MAP 1, Lot 31. Elderly exemption approval and elderly exemption denial. And a gravel tax levy for MAP 21, Lot 18. Are there any members of the Board who wish to remove any items for consent? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the 11 items on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries 3, 0, 0. Are there any items that members of the Board wish to have on any other business? No? Mr. Hope, do you have anything that you'd like to consider, have the Board consider that's not on the agenda?
No, I'll bring them up under other items. The only other thing I'd ask is that if the Board wants to note that the absences or excused absences.
That is correct. Both Mr. Perry and Mr. Brunel are absent and had stated so at the prior meeting. Okay. Hearing no other business, then. We'll continue on. Next item is Litchfield Republican Town Committee request for Albuquerque Avenue adoption. I want to alert the Board to the fact that I am a member of the Litchfield Republican Committee. If members of the Board are uncomfortable with that, I'd be glad to step down or what have you.
As a Republican or just from this conversation?
Mr. Garette, you're representing the committee, please.
Jason Garette, 11 Perry Court. I am the chairman of the Litchfield Republican Committee. One of the things that the committee is looking to do is to get out into town and start doing things. One of the things that we're hoping to participate in is in-road cleanup and specifically Adopt a Spot program. Goffstown has one in place. I sent Jason the link of their site. Hopefully, he sent that out to you. I think he said today he told me that he sent that out to you. It's a pretty straightforward piece of program that they've set up. They've got several areas. Basically, they've broken it up into program rules, cleanup report. It's just a report of what they've cleaned up and if they found anything hazardous or whatnot. There's a safety orientation form and a checklist and a signature sheet for those that would participate. An agreement form, release of liability for those that participate so they don't hold the town. It's a whole harmless sign-off, basically. And then there's a renewal or termination form that would then be renewed in their program every two years. As turnover happens and/or interest subsides, that's when things would sunset. I just want to go over just real quickly what they've done, hopefully that we can adopt here. Obviously, open to anybody. Specifically, again, if this were adopted, then obviously, we'd have interest in a section of Albuquerque because that would be our town. We could obviously participate through the state program on 3A, but I think this kind of thing in our town would go from end to end in Albuquerque is our main thoroughfare and probably get the most benefit, especially on the bike path and whatnot. But again, I'll go over the Goffstown one because I think it's a good one and something that we might want to adopt here. The Adopt a Spot program is developed to give volunteer groups, businesses, and citizens of the town an opportunity to manage the cleanup of litter from adopted sections of town-maintained roads or properties. The program will allow for greater community involvement in keeping the town free of litter. Signs will also be used to recognize the responsible group. The following rules will be used to administer the program and ensure positive program results. Safety and minimum program requirements of each group must follow are outlined in the rules. So you have, let's see. In the application section, each group that would like to participate in the program would submit an application. In Goffstown, they use the Department of Public Works. I can't imagine why it wouldn't take more than five minutes to do the whole thing with Jack at some point, our roads agent, or anybody else that the Board of Selectmen decided to do that. Obviously, that's probably the most commonsensical person. The application would include general information about that group but not limited to the date of application, name of group, mailing address, some identification things, and some identification of at least two potential areas the organization would like to adopt. The Department of Public Works would review the applications and deny requests for areas that are already adopted or deemed inappropriate for safety or other reasons. Obviously, you wouldn't want to go across a bog or some wetlands or something. Final decisions regarding all aspects of the program are discretionary and based on the program rules and other considerations deemed pertinent. And then you'd have a contract that would basically say you're going to follow the minimum requirements as outlined in that contract. And they include an acknowledgement that some stuff could be hazardous by nature on the roadside, an acknowledgement that a coordinator will distribute all related safety gear and training information. I know, I think we, on our cleanup day, provide some materials also in town. An agreement related to the specific times, frequency, and collection of materials. So for those folks that would actually adopt an area, it wouldn't just be like, I know we've got right now coming up cleanup day. This would be a year-round cleanup as the group saw it needed it. It would just keep it maintained throughout the year. And the Board of Selectmen could set a minimum. They could say once a year, twice a year, whatever you all chose would be acceptable for the program. Goffstown says twice a year, but again, in my opinion, it's something for a group to just take pride in. In their program, the DPW responsibilities would be to provide safety training and equipment, which is signs and vests, to the group coordinator. Again, this is their program, but provide trash bags for the collection event. Administer the agreement. Provide signs acknowledging the area and participation in the program. We'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute here. Schedule the pickup of all waste collected during the event. I would propose that we just take it to the trash, take it to our waste collection site. And I'm sure Dave would help us decide where that goes if there was any hazardous waste, obviously. These are the points we'd have to discuss. Group responsibilities. Groups complete the application, propose the dates, and coordinate with DPW on scheduling events and obtaining any safety or training. Groups will adopt a spot for a minimum of two years and require all individuals involved to sign a safety orientation sheet. Group members, they have to understand what that means. Each area will be cleaned for a minimum twice per year in both directions. Again, that's what they chose. Designate the group coordinator, whether it be the chair or if we had a subcommittee, someone would be the actual coordinator. Place all materials collected in bags that can be sealed and placed near the edge of the road. They have DPW pick it up, but I would imagine we'd be picking it up and bringing it to the dump. Require miners to have parental consent, first aid supplies. We'd have to take care of our folks, in other words. No group member under court order to provide community service. They don't want folks that are already having to do that for this to count for that. Group volunteers and their legal guardians are required to sign waivers. In other words, if there's anybody under 18. The group, not the town or its agents, is responsible for the activities of the participants, obviously. The group will hold harmless to DPW and its agents for claims arising out of work and services provided, as well as any and all claims based on negligence and involve intentional conduct of any participant. Obviously, there's, like I said, there's a waiver. They're not making the town responsible for any injuries if something did happen. Termination. DPW in its discretion can terminate the group for any of the following reasons. If we fail to renew, if you discontinue the program, if anybody in the group engages in unsafe activity, or the group fails to comply with the minimum standards. Again, it's just a quick down and dirty. If you review what they've got out there, I think it's pretty good. It's as good as I've seen anywhere I've been around. We're going to participate in town cleanup regardless, but I think what's important is the ownership part of it. Folks get to actually have skin in the game, right? So you have a group of people and they can say, "This is our spot." And I can't imagine, I mean, it's a successful program. Pretty much everywhere you go, you see the signs out there. We wouldn't, we've got a source for signage. If you guys approved of the signage, we'd buy our own signage. So we wouldn't put the town in hog for any monies. You know, that kind of thing.
The town has programs that are being run currently through the state. So for example, there's various groups, one of which I know is the Conservation Commission that does 3A and that type of thing. And there's other groups. I think the Women's Club does other locations in town. If I'm not mistaken, they were doing it over there because that is a state road, it's not a town road. And I don't know, there's another couple groups that I know are picking up portions of 3A as you go along. But within the town of Litchfield itself, we don't have a program like that. We had looked at doing that at one point and we made a decision not to do that simply because of the liability involved, even though you end up in a situation, well, the Goffstown procedure that you read or referred to stated that the town had no liability by endorsing it. There is a liability that you garner to the town, especially considering you're doing the safety training, you're doing the provision of safety materials and all of that type of stuff. For those reasons, the town had not decided to go ahead with that. There is, I know, ad hoc committees out there that are doing cleanup. In fact, I think one of the items further on our agenda is that there was a request by that group to announce that they were going to do a cleanup day, what, this Saturday and stuff? What group is that? What's the name of the group?
It's not a formal group. It's a couple people that have every year said, "Hey, we'll spearhead a town cleanup day." So I got an email from them asking to announce that they were doing it on Saturday. This is the time of year that we see, when you see the blue bags alongside various roads, we probably have 10, 20 volunteers that pick up various parts of town. In fact, even Albuquerque probably has 6, 8 people who have already informally adopted segments of it.
So we had not, as a Board, put in place anything like that program that you're talking about, that Goffstown currently has. Any comments, questions for Mr. Garette and members of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's a noble idea and I think that, but I know through experience also that our insurance carriers are very leery because once we do endorse, then inevitably there is some cost to the town. And their concern is, apparently, you can write waivers all you want, but sometimes the danger of lawsuit is inherent no matter what you do. And again, I certainly like the idea, but I know that in other places we've tried it, they said, "Nix, let's leave it to our volunteer organizations" because of that reason. I mean, I guess there's no reason the town couldn't support efforts informally.
That's what I was just going to say.
You know, because of, you know, it's something that benefits all of us. But with Frank, I remember the discussions before and I'm involved in them currently that they're very concerned about that, our carriers as a municipality.
I understand. I say to myself, when you start to endorse them on the public, it's almost tacit endorsement. So while you haven't necessarily formally endorsed it, when you make an appointment at the Board of Select meeting to make an announcement and/or put it on the reader boards and we all understand that it's our town cleanup day. We call it that. It's tacitly, I would imagine if someone did get hurt and chose to sue, it would still be the same, they're still suing the same people because they see deep pockets.
Yeah.
But no, I understand your point.
On the other side of the coin, as you heard a couple moments ago, there are groups that are currently doing that in town. There's no reason that your group cannot do that as well. That's not an issue whatsoever.
Agreed. And we've had that conversation, but like I said, there are, when you go across the country, not just in New Hampshire, when you go across the country, that's what people do when people own a spot rather than go out and just help out and it becomes a source of pride and then people.
Sure, the state. You see the signs on 293, CMO 93?
Dot the island.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it becomes a competition almost amongst folks. And so when you talk about Albuquerque, which goes right through the center of our town, if this is, if this is the Boy Scouts and/or the Women's Club and/or whatever, and they have this area, it tends to push things a little further along because of the competition that goes on and then it becomes an even better practice. And so that's an important piece to this also is, yep, town does get cleaned because volunteers will do it, but I think it could be so much more than that if people are allowed to adopt certain areas. Because you see, some folks do, they'll put down there right on 3A at.
I happen to agree with and believe in.
Yeah.
Happen to agree with.
Flowers are down there. Can we find out what that bump in cost might be in insurance?
I don't even know if they would.
If they'd write it.
Yeah, I don't even know if they'd write it.
Can we even ask the question? Is it, if there really is an insurance barrier, let's get that answer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think generally, the issue is not going to be, "Oh, well, we're going to add X to your premium."
Right.
It's going to be, we're going to want, we're going to want to, there's an onus that comes back on sort of that safety and training component because that's our biggest exposure.
Of course.
Is, we need to find the right staff capacity somewhere to actually certify the training because that will be your exposure when something goes wrong. You didn't teach me that in the training.
Right.
So then, so it's really going to be kind of the time investment to coordinate with the carrier, what training do you want us to give, and then deliver that training.
Well, I think without knowing, I mean, we're all sitting around just tossing around and without actually knowing what that is, we can't adequately.
I think it's a matter also of the increase in liability.
I think that's the biggest thing, right? Liability to the town, but again, worth checking into.
I'll make a phone call out to Goffstown, find out what actual impact it's had on them, you know, because it may not have had any impact on them. The theoretical unknown is an unknown. We don't know. I mean, we can hope or we can concern ourselves with the worst that could ever happen and that means we don't ever do anything, right? Or we say to ourselves, "There's folks out there now doing it. Has anybody got hurt?" No. So effectively, there's no added bump in perceived liability because people are out there now and not getting hurt.
But I think at the end of the day, Mr. Garette, the Board of Selectmen has said that, you know, is saying that we don't want to take this on as a project in terms of putting together a program similar to what you're asking for and is established in the town of Goffstown here in Litchfield. As far as the issue of looking into it, I don't have a problem with looking into the insurance or whatever the case may be, but at the end of the day, I don't think the town is looking to undertake those types of extra programs at this present time.
Okay. It's almost like you guys had that conversation already. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, annual policy review, background. So there were a group of one, two, three, four policies, something like that, that needed to be reviewed?
Yeah, we picked the four, yep.
So why don't we pick the first one first, the background check policy?
On this one, if you open up the actual policy, you'll see some of the comments attached. I had no major recommended changes. Received some comments from one member of the Board. And I think one of the questions was what happens when you have an appointed official that refuses the background check? And two thoughts on that. One, if that is a term-related appointment, then that person is not appointed to a subsequent term. If it is not a term-related one, then they're not in compliance with the policies of the town. If you go back to the chart at the end of this, we created the expectation that the ongoing ones would apply for employees hired, appointed after May 1st, 2012, because that was the concern the council brought up at the time, is you can't require it for an existing So I think that addressed those. And I can, I'll ask you, Frank, is that, you would flag the question and that was sort of my take, that was my take on the answer to it.
Okay.
Is that?
Fine.
Next one was scrolling forward a couple pages. We note that when we look, when we get the financial report, that we simply keep a note of satisfactory check and destroy the rest. The question was, you know, just wanted to make sure that that was clear in here. I think our policy now says we retain a record noting the satisfactory check and any financial report will be disposed after review through shredding paper copies, erasing any electronic data copies, or through turning the complete report over to the applicant. The criminal background piece goes through the police chief for the report back, and so those are handled through the police record part of it. Again, I'll bounce that back, Frank. We haven't had a chance to.
Well, I'm looking at the one here where you're stating that by signing the first report, that the report basically carries through to subsequent requests for approval. And I'm not sure that the state system would match what you're considering here. So in other words, the person who is an appointed official or an employee who needs a background check signs one form at the beginning of their tenure and that's good forever and ever.
Mm-hmm.
Does that work in the state system?
That works. That works in the federal guidance from EOC and FTC.
Okay.
They just put out a new clarification on the use of background checks and the language is from the FTC, "Get the applicant or employees written permission to do the background check. This could be part of the document used to notify the person that you will get the report. If you want the authorization to allow you to get background reports throughout the person's employment, make sure you say so clearly and conspicuously."
Okay. And that will also work in the state system? Because I know the state's got a separate system where they get their own form.
Oh, the state, you're going to have to fill out the form. Well, everybody's individual request forms, you're going to have to probably fill out time after time. But the notion of you're going to be subject to these ongoing is covered by the policy.
Okay.
And then there was a, the last question that came up was, "We put in a provision on the financial reports," because these are the most costly for us, "that the applicant may choose to provide a valid recent credit report issued within 120 days of the review period in lieu of town securing a separate report. However, the town retains the ability to request an additional report." And I think the concern was whether the applicant providing it was appropriate, going back to one of the previous situations we had with the treasurer and prior treasurer. And I guess, yeah, and that's a fair comment. And I think the note that I had is the town retains the right to, if they, to get their own, even if the applicant provides a copy of their own.
My other comment that's on there, which I didn't think you addressed, was the issue of ensuring that once those records are reviewed, they're destroyed.
I thought I already discussed that.
You did.
I did. And it has that, if you go above that chart there, it has that we retain the record noting the check only and any financial report is shredded, electronic data copies destroyed, or the complete report's turned over to the applicant. And we have that sort of notation simply that goes in the file that says passed. In fact, you'll see that attached for the treasurer.
The reason I raised it at that point was because that statement is underneath the credit check section. And I didn't know whether it applied to the background check section.
Okay. And in the background check section, that's the higher-up section, then that goes straight through the police department.
Right. But the chief was supposed to, when we originally set it up, he was required to destroy the records. And I can't find that.
Okay.
That's what I'm reacting to.
Okay, all right. We can add a sentence in on that then, because we simply leave it to the chief and the chief provides advisory back.
Right, and that's fine.
Yep.
And I understand that. But I wanted to make sure that after he provides that advisory, that he destroys the records because he should not be hanging on to records for background checks.
Okay. These reports will be.
Do you understand what I mean?
Yep. Securely.
No.
Yep. So up in the police reviews section, I added a sentence that has, "These reports will be securely destroyed and not be retained by the police department."
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Are there any other comments or questions on this policy by members of the Board?
No, sir.
Mr. Hope, any final comments on this?
Nope, I think we're okay then.
We'll go back to.
Is this Board happy with the policy as written or as revised, I should say?
Yep.
So make a motion, the Board of Selectmen approve the town of Litchfield background check policy, effective what date?
4/28.
Yeah, it may be effective today.
Okay. Effective 4/28, 2014.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second discussion. Hearing no discussion, take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries 3, 0, 0. Next policy we have in front of us will be cash receipt policy.
Recommend removal of the petty cash section.
I'd just like it noted in the minutes that Mr. LaMaire has excused himself from the meeting, so we can continue discussions, but we cannot take action on anything.
Removed the petty cash section, added a change cash drawer section, and all other sections reflect our current operations and no additional issues regarding cash receipts have been identified by the auditors. There was a sentence that needed some clarification up under the solid waste disposal fee section. Unfortunately, it sounded as if we were turning all of our cash funds here over to Dave, which was not really the intent. The intent, as it's now written, is that we get. The intent, as it's now written, is that, you know, we get occasional funds here. So somebody with eagle eyes picked that up and asked if we were giving all of the town money to the solid waste facility. The, and as I mentioned before, I've wiped out the petty cash section altogether. This is something that over the past two years, I think we've used twice each of the past two years. So it's no need to just let it go and not have this extensive policy to support it. That said, when we were talking about it in the office, we realized, you know what we don't have is any statement about the cash drawers that we have for making change between Town Clark Tax Collector's Office and Selectman's Office. So ported most of the logic that had been applied to petty cash and put it up under cash drawer procedures. Making sure that they're retained, checked, verified, audited, and the like. And then the last question that Frank had brought up, that I guess my view was that we were covered under what we've already stated was, you know, what happens when we can't reconcile any of the cash funds? Do we need to call out a decision process or reference another process for handling those? When does the problem get kicked to Selectman or PD? Our existing section of compliance says if you violate it, it may result in denial or revocation of privilege to handle town funds, subject to disciplinary action, including termination, as outlined in personnel policy. Other officials may be subject to discipline or removal as provided under prevailing bylaws, ordinances, or state law. My sense was that there was a path that was identified there.
Yeah, I think my point in this was that if there's a discrepancy found, it says, for example, if you look at page three, just above the petty cash section that you earmarked to remove, says any discrepancy found must be explained in writing and in detail to the finance director and town administrator. But there's nothing that really says what's gonna happen with that information. Maybe we just wanna say the town administrator will advise the board of selectmen or whatever the case may be, I don't know. That's all I was trying to bring up.
Mm-hmm.
What's the opinion of other members of the board?
I think that'd be a good idea, as far as advising us.
So basically, Mr. Chair, you're saying that to the finance director and the town administrator, who would in turn notify the board of selection?
If there's a discrepancy, you can't resolve.
If you can't resolve, yeah, and, and I guess the, the question is, I mean, if you want to, we can certainly call it out separately. If it's a discrepancy and we can't resolve, most likely it's gonna trigger some other part of-
Right.
-one of our other policies in place.
Well, and that's why I said, or refer to another policy if you can't resolve it. That's all.
Yeah. You know, either, you know, good faith, random error, fraud, which then triggers the fraud policy, or, you know, most likely the fraud policy brought it out of the credit card would cover anything, but ostensibly, if not, you know, there'd be something under the personnel policy.
But we can certainly add a sentence there that says the town administrator will-
Who, and town administrator, who will in turn notify the board of selection?
And I'm only talking for unresolved. I mean, if you resolve, if there's a discrepancy and you resolve it-
Mm-hmm.
-that's fine. I'm just talking to anything that doesn't resolve.
Yeah, I don't even, well, yeah, but I could resolve it, and it would still be an issue. So, yeah. Let me, let me see if I can add a sentence here.
The town administrator will notify the board of any discrepancies? And then that, what, resolved or unresolved, right? Would that be easier? Because isn't that basically what you're saying, that?
Sure.
Well, I'm trying, wasn't that your, your intent?
I mean, an issue's gonna come up. It's either resolved, or it triggers an action under another policy, and those other policies will require a certain path of action accordingly. Hold on a second. How does, uh, when appropriate, the town administrator will follow any reporting and investigation steps required by prevailing town policies?
Fine.
Does that work?
Perfect.
Okay.
Any further questions on this, or any concerns on this by members of the board?
The only question I had, and to back up at the top, is with solid waste facilities. I know, I know Frank, you asked the question if the dump was giving receipts, and they only give a receipt upon request, right? Is that correct, Jason?
I think that's the case, yeah.
Yeah. So I guess my question would be is, you know, would it be beneficial to, let's just make sure that they give a receipt, just in case? I mean, if somebody gives us a check and there's nothing there, it's just checks and balances, right? So at the end of the day, if they have five checks and five receipts, they balance. Right? So at the end of the day, if they have five, five receipts and only three checks, it doesn't balance, so there's, just a thought. Other than that, I think it looks good. I mean, Jason wouldn't know how it works better than I do, but it's just-
Yeah, and, and-
That was, that was the only thing that sort of caught me.
And, and I think some of that has just been, has been the logistics of going back and grabbing the, grabbing the receipt book to write it. If, if somebody's paying sort of in one spot, and, you know, because-
Is it, is it a generic receipt book, though?
Yeah, it's a, well, it's a consistent sort of-
I mean, they have the hot, hot as you pull in, right? So they could have a receipt book that-
They could, they could certainly do it.
I don't know if there's ever been an issue, I'm not saying that there's an issue, I'm just, just looking at it.
I, I think the as, at, upon request was, was the trade-off there, because the biggest risk exposure for receipt has gone away by the fact you're not taking cash.
I was gonna say, if it were cash, I think that that's one thing, but checks may, may not be such an issue, right?
Well, you, in the, in the sense, a check, check is like cash, right? I mean, somebody takes a check and sticks it in their pocket. They go home for a day, and they're walking, walking away with a check in their pocket, right? They give a receipt, and at the end of the day, it's, Dave, here's the receipt, like, you know what I mean? If, if we were taking credit cards, it'd be no issue, because you reconcile at the end of the day with credit cards.
Well, of course, you reconcile checks usually, if you're, if, you know, I mean, the, the issuer of a check will reconcile that, and, and know in their checkbook or their account that that check's been-
Correct. They will, but we won't.
But what will happen is it'll show up that the check was cash, I think to Kevin's point. You know, I, if I issue a check, it shows that the check's cash, but it's not gonna show-
Correct. So it's just, that was the only thing that really caught me, so.
Let me suggest on that, because I think that's a valid point to stick around. Why don't we?
Because I, I would imagine that, it's not only anybody, anybody would take a check at the dump, who's ever at the hut? Is that correct?
I think that's the case. Let, let's do this, let's, um, I think it's a valid point, let, let me talk to Dave, just try to kick around with him before I misstate his operation, and we can double back on-
Yeah, that's fine.
Double back on this next time.
All right, you too.
Okay. Conference and meetings?
I'm gonna suggest that we postpone that one. I got a handful of comments later in the day that I just need to do some rewrites on, and I ran out of rewrite time.
Okay. How about credit card?
Sure. Let's see. Couple minor changes here. Pull this up here. Okay. Think what clarified that unless previously approved by the town administrator, total amount of each single purchase may not exceed the limit of a thousand dollars. The, and I, that was a note we had straggling from last year. I generally know when that's happening anyway, but this kind of formalizes it, that it goes through me, and I know that that's happening.
That doesn't overrule the requirement that we follow the purchasing policy, right?
No, no, this is, no. This is gonna be separate from that, but that way I know that that's brewing. Oh yes, I would suggest that we could probably do away with the all carbons should be destroyed reference. Not too many carbons out there anymore.
I don't remember the last time I saw one, now that you mention that. Holy mackerel!
Yeah.
That was a while ago.
Well, you know. Segments of this policy have had its roots in-
Holy mackerel!
-historic practices and places.
Forget all about those.
Um, under the request for initial additional changes to cards, clarified that the selectmen can remove with or without cause cards. And under the audit section, that the selectmen will review all card, cardholders at least every two years. You know, in sort of a formal way, so you can kind of see what's there. I mean, you know. Informally, you see it every month in the midst of the manifest.
I made those two comments because I was, we ought to go back and purge any, any cards that may not be being used, or do whatever the case may be on a periodic basis.
And, and we, we do that, we do that pretty regularly now anyway, because the, in the past, you had many cards at different vendors, I mean, we've sort of, we've tried to centralize everything to kind of a bank, bank-based card.
What's the renewal on the cards? Is it two years, four years? I know, like, every credit card's different as far as, you know, it renews every two years, or some renew every four years, or-
Hold on a second.
I thought it was three.
Hold on a second here.
You're shaking my-
Yeah. It's on my desk. It's gotta be two years.
Two years? So two, two years would be good.
Yeah, but we ought, you know, I'll tell you, informally, I take a look at them of what the list is more frequently, because what ends up happening from time to time and is, for those purchases over a thousand dollars, I, I often know about it, because if somebody has a larger purchase to make, we do kind of a, if it's approved, approved purchase, we may do a one-time bump in their limit-
Right, right.
-and then pull them back down. Usually that's John buying equipment. Every now and again, Jack will. So we check not only the list, but also where the, where the limits are.
Okay.
Okay. Are there other questions, comments, or concerns from the board on this policy?
I will make a motion that we approve the credit card policy.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carries three zero zero. So we have completed the review of most of the policies. I think you're taking two of them back, Jason.
Yep.
The conference and meeting and cash receipts.
Cash receipts.
Those two are going back. You need to speak to Dave on cash receipts and conference and meeting, you need to make some-
Mainly technical changes, but there's just, and then the next block that, for the next meeting, will be financial reconciliation, fraud, fund balance, and investment.
Okay. Is there anything else on the annual policy review? Okay, it's about ten minutes of seven right now, so I stated, we stated the public input would be no later than six thirty. Other members of the public who wish to address the board?
Jason Garrett, eleven, very court. Just wondering what the, I had, I had sent an inquiry, or sent some information to Mr. Hope about lease car cruiser purchases. We had purchased two in the previous budget for the end of the lease period, I believe it is, right? Came in, came to the end in this last year's operating budget. Now we have a new operating budget, which happened to offend the, the default budget, which does not have an approval by the legislative body to enter into a multi-year agreement. So the way I read it, certainly can go out and buy additional, the new cruisers, because there was no authorization to continue the current lease. You're certainly empowered to buy them flat out, but their legislative body did not appropriate for the, the next year's lease payment as specified. So I was just curious as to if the board is going to continue as it is currently, or going to relook at that.
Where, you, you sent quite a few emails, from what I understand, to the town administrator, I also believe to the chairman, Mr. Brunell. What is it that you're looking to accomplish by this?
That we follow state law.
And what do you, what are you looking for as an outcome?
That we follow the state law. Whatever happens, happens, as long as we follow the law, I got no, no problem with it.
The background in the, in the program is that in nineteen ninety-nine, the Town of Londonderry approached the state legislature with a request that they eliminate the requirement to have a two-thirds vote to do things, similar to doing contracts. In nineteen ninety-nine, they submitted a bill, or a bill was submitted to the state legislature, and it went in front of both the House and the Senate Municipal and County committees. The reason expressed by the Town of Londonderry during those hearings was to allow for rentals of cruises, as well as other pieces of equipment that were normally required as part of the managing of the town. The testimony of the committee also stated that the non-appropriation clause items can be funded from a default budget. And that testimony also stated that Senate Bill Two Towns, Senate Bill Two Towns, if the budget failed, the appropriation would be contained into the default budget. So the legislature at that point in time enacted based upon all of that RSA thirty-three colon seven E, which allows for municipalities to do leases without a two-thirds vote. So other RSAs are not applicable to that particular situation. Thirty-three colon seven E states that the governing body may enter into leases of equipment as required by a municipality, period. It doesn't, it goes, it stops right there. And continues, it says, "The appropriation to fund lease agreements with non-appropriation clauses may be approved by a single majority vote of the legislative body," period. That appropriation has already been done by the town. Since two thousand and ten, the board of selectmen have put into place continuously within the operating budget appropriations for leasing cruisers in the town. Okay? That has been an ongoing situation, has carried over year to year to year to year, and has not changed. Mr. Hope is town administrator, while working in other municipalities, has reviewed this situation through council, who happens to be the same council that the Town of Litchfield currently uses. And he has received the opinion in other towns and other municipalities that we can put in the operating budget, things like cruisers that do not contain, that contain a non-appropriation clause. We as a board, through our ex officio member last year and the years before that, presented to the budget committee fully, all of the information that we were putting into the budget, the rental costs of cruisers. That's been widely known, there's no information on that. The information that you have sent, Mr. Garrett, to the, the board, I looked over some of that, and it references a Supreme Court case, Foot versus the Manchester School District, if I'm not mistaken-
Mm-hmm.
-which is a court case that came up because Manch, uh, the city of, excuse me, the town a bit, that was going to send pupils to the Manchester- of Bedford was going to send pupils to the Manchester School District, got into some difficulties with Manchester in any ways. What ended up happening is that the Bedford School Board, if I'm not mistaken, ended up signing a contract or with the city of Manchester for two or three years. This is not even applicable to what we're talking about because there's not a non-appropriation clause in that contract. So it's not applicable. The other thing that you referenced was an article from NHMA that said trust funds or capital reserve funds cannot do contracts, and that's not the situation we have in Litchfield.
I sent another also.
Okay, well, I'm unaware of that.
Yeah, sorry.
It says that, it did say that one small section of the article states that towns can use RSA thirty-three colon seven E, and is differing opinion, as I said a moment ago, from what council has given to Mr. Hope in his various capacities in other municipalities. And it's at odds with the intention of the legislature. So at the end of the day, the Board of Selectmen are aware of this, we're comfortable with the situation the way it is, and that the matter we consider as being handled appropriately by placing it into the budget.
Okay. I, I was curious, because like you said, I know, I know in which, in which high regard members of this board feel about the New Hampshire Municipal Association and, and their opinion. I've heard about it in this room, talked about quite a bit, and I understand your choosing not to go with their opinion in this case, because they specifically, there was a third that I sent, may not have forwarded out yet, but which specifically spoke of a piece of equipment leased, and, and the opinion in that case. And I do, I understand, I understand the point, and it requires challenge. So we'll, we'll challenge. Thank you.
Other members of the public who wish to address the board? Hearing none, we will move on then. Next item on the agenda, fee update, Mr. Hope.
Our fee schedule was last updated in 2012. Working on a revision to that list, the departments are reviewing them now. I don't really expect many changes on this, except in the area of solid waste. You may recall when we did this in 12, that our authority for adjusting the fees for solid waste facility wasn't exactly clear, so we had that enabling article passed at last year's town meeting. So Dave's put together a major revision of those fees. Some things have been added, some have been removed in an attempt to reflect our actual disposal cost, as well as the changing nature of products being received. You know, for instance, in a volume-based pricing system, flat-screen monitors are a lot cheaper than the Spacehog CRT monitors, so we should change that fee accordingly. I gave you the list just for informationally here, sort of that you can see the way we're thinking. I know the fire chief has reached out to some of his colleagues to sort of see what market fees are there. This will prob, be a future meeting item, you'll probably see it later, probably second meeting in May, because it is a, the requirement for this fee setting is public hearing, newspaper ad, all of those hoops. So I'm trying to gather everybody's all at once. But I wanted to let you know, we are working on this, and you can get some insight into...
Mike, Mike, I have a couple of questions on this, and one of which is, you're looking to do roof shingles, to change it from fifty dollars per load to ten dollars per square. I, I'm puzzled as to how somebody at the fire control facility is going to know what a square is. I know what a square is.
Do you know what a square is? No, because I don't, and I was wondering that myself.
If you don't mind, Frank, I can touch on it.
Do you know what a square is?
I do. Square of shingles, when you're doing roofs. So you see bundles of shingles?
Mm-hmm.
So every three bundles equals a square, which is a 10 by 10 area. So touching on what Frank was probably going to say, Dave Mellon does roofs, knows roofs, he could easily judge, okay, this is a square, two square, three square. Some of the other people down, down there, I truly don't think they're going to have any idea.
Yeah, I mean, I couldn't.
And, and that was Dave's recommendation to run it that way, because what he, his concern was, he said, "I can identify a square when it comes in and, and have a fair charge." He said, "Right now, the fifty dollars per load is somewhat more arbitrary. Is that a big load, a small load? What do I do for half a load?"
Well, that's true. That's true, too, yeah.
And so for him, the square was the simplest, fairest measure to say, "And I can charge somebody a little or charge someone appropriately." Because he's struggling with fifty bucks a load is not a real helpful measure. So, yes, if you put me down there one day, I would not be so great estimating a square.
No, I wouldn't use this.
So just touching on that base, one thing I don't see on here, and I know a few people have come up to me and asked, is what do we do for people who want to, who want to dump commercially that live in town? So per se, somebody shows up with a big truck, say fifteen square of shingles, you're going to use that formula? Or like, like somebody built an addition, they have all the wood left over from the addition, do we, I just don't know if there's, you know?
We can take from individual homeowners or individual home projects. I'm pretty sure that our permit doesn't consistently allow commercial. Let, let me get a, let me get a better answer from Dave on that, because it, it is a tricky spot for us of, you know, is this coming from a Litchfield house, or is this somebody's business? So.
Okay.
Fair question, let me...
The, the other thing I want to understand is, why are we expanding this out? I mean, I, I know it cost the town to get rid of it, but that's why people are paying taxes to the town. And, and I understand that, but I mean, we're, you're now going to start charges for mattresses, mattress box spring, fire extinguisher, sleep sofas, sofas, loveseat, basketball mats, microwaves, laptops, and I don't know what it is, fire suppression, whatever that is.
No, that's, that's, if you look, that's coded under building fire, that's to approve fire suppression systems. This is starting to be the catch-all for...
But I guess what I'm wondering about is, why do we want to expand that out? Why, I mean, pretty soon we're going to need a, somebody down there with a laptop just to understand what they got to charge. And, and what I'm wondering about is, you know, every time you add these types of fees, I mean, I've been down there several times where I've had stuff in my pickup where I said, you know, "I got to get rid of this." And Dave says, "Well, there's a ten dollar charge for that." Now, I turn around and I come back at home, go get my checkbook, and then go back down. But I guess my question is, why do we want to expand what we're collecting on?
The types of things that were flagged are the items that are large items that add to the disposal cost quickly. Mattresses fill up a bigger chunk in the construction demolition bin. It's, it's rather common for mattresses and sofas to have disposal charges because of their size and scale. The, the television approach, we had one-size-fits-all, and what tried to do is create a gradation there for, you know, not all TVs are one-size-fits-all. Microwaves, we do have to pull separately. Laptops are retained and have to be disposed of separately because you have the same monitor screen, so you're paying for a disposal of a monitor, which does trigger a cost.
A cost to Litchfield?
Yes. You know, so, so these are all things that we have sort of unique disposal costs for that aren't necessarily routine, they're not routine household trash.
If I may, we, one thing when I'm looking at this, that's sort of concerns me, is some of the jumps that, you know, we go from a forty-inch, forty-two-inch television from ten to twenty-five dollars. To me, that just, it just, again, touching on what Frank's saying, as far as people paying taxes, it just seems like, you know, that's a large increase, ten dollars, twenty-five dollars, that's... And then you, you go from a thirty-two to a forty-two, and it only jumps five dollars. So I mean, they're just very sporadic, you know what I mean, as far as...
Well, what you try to do is try to create sort of a band of, right now, it's ten bucks, one-size-fits-all, whether you got, you know, seventeen-inch or seventy-inch, it's one size, it's one flat ten-dollar fee, which also didn't seem fair, and it also didn't seem, you know, it doesn't reflect sort of what our burden is in getting rid of it. So I get what you're saying, and part of what, you know, part of what Dave said, it was, you know, we tried to find reasonable bands to do, to break it up a little bit.
And also, another thing, just seeing this, I see all the zeros in the current, and then I see all the dollar figures in the proposed. This just helps my case as far as the receipts, because now it's very minimal, what we currently do as far as the, you know, checks going into it, right? So if we go with what the proposed is, there's going to be a lot more checks going out.
Sure.
You know what I'm saying? So, you know, those are my thoughts. And then just one other question up top, right? You got current on the propane tank, five dollars, proposed is zero, and then I go down to propane, propane tanks again, and then you have five, and then it goes up to ten.
Right. The small tanks, we aren't getting, aren't getting those, and those, those we don't have a disposal cost for.
Okay.
The ones that we still do have a disposal cost for, that's a higher disposal cost, are the larger tanks, thirty to sixty.
So why don't, why don't we have a, a cost for the propane tank?
The, the small ones?
Yeah.
Because there are very few of them right now. And so, you know, Dave's sense was, you know, we generally get rid of those fairly straightforward. There are, there are very, most of those with the whole swap a tank thing.
Yeah.
They, they've left the system, we don't see those anymore.
Okay.
And you just get the big ones. So.
So your intention going forward with this is to collect more information and bring it back at a point, later, a point in time to the board, right?
Right, right. I wanted to kind of get this input now, the last thing I want to do is wait till I schedule the hearing and then, and then have it, so...
I think you've heard our concerns and our issues, our thoughts, and everything else, so...
And, you know, and I can sort of, I can say also, we are, we have the ability to turn on, and we just haven't worked out all the logistics yet, may actually get back to part of your receipt thing. We may be able to offer, or, you know, we will be able to offer online payment for these items. Got to figure out the track, the paper and receipt tracking piece, but we realize we can turn that system on.
Okay.
One of the beneficial upshots that, you know, the, using the same system Town Clark Tax Collector uses, when we turned it on for Winterfest, we realized, oh, you know, this wouldn't be too bad to turn on for transfer station charges as well. So, okay. And I'll keep this live somewhere up here, because as I get some other input from other departments, you'll see them kind of slipping in on the bottom.
Okay. Next item, volunteer cleanup day.
I mean, we alluded to this earlier. The volunteers that organize a cleanup day have passed along to us that it is scheduled for Saturday, May 3rd. They will be organizing from eight to noon, starting out here, and setting out routes on that time. So anybody who has an interest wherever they are in town, this is a good way to kind of be involved in an organized effort. I think also, you know, we touched on it a little bit, but with the arrival of spring, we probably have twelve, fifteen, twenty other people who have already been out sort of independently on their own, picking things up, and that is much appreciated.
Do we put this on the website announcements?
Yeah.
And we would do that for anybody, right?
Anybody who asks. You know, you know, last week, I put up the notice about the Boy Scouts recycling drive, you know, which ostensibly competes with our fee collection.
It's a community service.
Exactly. I mean, if, if people pass that stuff...
Community interest.
When, when people send that stuff along to us, we'll put it up.
Okay. Anything else on that? Social media policy.
Yeah, we brought this up last time, the response was lukewarm at best.
No, I was the only one who had some concerns about it.
Yeah, you know, and, you know, I think there's some fair questions there. I brought it back up just to see if there was any more reflection over the past two weeks, or do you want me to continue carrying it forwards?
Well, I personally think that I'm the only one who has some level of concern about it. I think that probably it's best to postpone discussion on this until there's a full of board here, if that makes sense to the other committee members.
Yes, I mean, I, I do have, I don't know how I feel about this yet. I'm afraid that it, it's, it's all encompassing, and I'm, I'm good with the intent, I'm just, I'm still trying to wrap my head around it, so...
There's no timeline you have set on this?
No, no.
Okay.
No, no, this way, you know, honestly, the history on this was, this bubbled up one day in the manager's listserv, and I was like, "Oh, hey, that's not a bad idea," you know, because I've been a little wary about kind of flying blind as we expand our use. I've also been a little wary of writing a policy, so...
Yeah, and I know how you feel.
Yeah, so, you know...
So I go, ooh.
Yeah, so I have no strong feeling, but I thought, you know, we should at least have a conversation about it, so, okay.
Okay, next item, health insurance renewals.
Health insurance renewals, I am trying very hard to find a good deal here. The past couple of weeks, I've been chasing some of the options here for the, what information we need about plan changes. The spreadsheet I've attached has all sorts of evolving things on it, so I apologize, probably none of it's exactly warm and friendly presentation ready yet. The things to know is that we renew July 1st. Our current provider sort of like-to-like is showing about a just under a five percent increase. You know, we have priced plan changes with our current providers, you know, and one of the things that we had discussed was a change in co-pays and what that does. So, you know, we started, we've priced that as well. The real issue we have facing us is next year. You recall, right now, we are rated with the school district, and so we're part of a large group. With their departure, we will now move to what the insurers call the under-50 group. So we are not uniquely, completely uniquely rated by ourselves, and so if we face a substantial rating increase, like-to-like for, if we were in that pool this July, we'd be looking at, at least a 10% increase. So what I've, I've reached out to the other two pools that offer insurance to school districts and towns, that's School Care and the New Hampshire Interlocal Trust. And after gathering up everything they wanted, actually today, I got rates from both School Care and the Interlocal Trust. I actually met with the Interlocal Trust after a meeting in Concord today. I think there's some good options there. What I'm going to, what I'm leaning toward right now, unless, is a move in some form or fashion to the Interlocal Trust, which works with Harvard Pilgrim, who's their main provider. The rates that I'm looking at are very good. I don't yet have a recommendation on exactly which of the, their offerings will make sense. I can tell you that their, their, their equivalent of our current offerings that the majority of our employees are in, so still staying at the five-dollar office visit, is a rate that is, for all intents and purposes, the same as we're paying now. So, and that is in the under-50 group with them. So we would avoid the ticking package next year as well that way. My intention here is, I would like to find a solution that we're comfortable with, that we can, if we make the change this year, that we can follow through and retain that change next year, rather than kind of hopscotching plan or, you know, adjusting again, so we can, especially if we're going to change programs. So I'm working on it, the numbers are good. My next steps on this are to dig a little bit more and do my homework on the interlocal offering, have some of the conversations with the employees as appropriate, you know, remember we have bargaining unit as part of this as well. So... So I expect that I will have a recommendation back to you in May.
I would like to do two things. One, get a sense as to what your timeline is on this, number one. Are you planning on having some potential models for us to look at, probably May-June timeframe?
May, yeah. I am hoping that for the next, your next meeting, I will have a more, a decent recommendation for you of where I'm looking to go and what the numbers would look like. You know, if, on that spreadsheet that's kind of baked into the page that you're looking at, if you go to, there's a second tab that's called Plan Comparison. That, you know, shows the raw data right now for monthly premium. So what I'll do is run the rest of those, look at what the cost impacts are for the town, and what the big-picture budget impact would be for us.
I would also like to get, my second question is, I'd like to get for that period when you bring stuff back, an understanding of the sensitivity of the costs to deductibles, as well as to co-pays. I think we need to have an understanding. In other words, I heard you say a moment ago that keeping the co-pays the same gives you a certain figure, which is comparable to what we have today. But I'd like to understand what happens if we change that co-pay, what happens to the planned costs and stuff like that.
Yeah, and those are the kinds of numbers I've asked for, for all of them, just to, you know, my sense is, you know, the $5, the $5 plan is probably not sustainable, and there is at least a perception in the larger community that it may be very generous. The challenge, and I'll be honest, the challenge with all of these is that, you know, these providers offer, you know, 5, 10, 15, 20. There's not, you know, a big, you know, a bigger ticket than you may see with other But yeah, I will continue to update this, I will put up appropriate sort of background information on the different plans as they make sense, so you can kind of compare where we are and where we may be going.
Okay. Anything else further on this, or questions from the board? Next item, county budget hearing.
Sorry, this was a late addition. This came in Friday afternoon, and the paper copy came today. The Hillsborough County Board of Commissioners is having their public budget hearing this coming Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. And this is one of the steps towards ultimate approval sometime in June, I believe, is when the delegation gets it. The Commissioners' budget right now calls for a 2.3% increase in tax appropriation, and they attribute that largely to cost of workers' comp and health insurance. Their note, and I think it was in the folder there, references the fact that when you get a premium holiday one year and you don't get a premium holiday the next year, you have swings in your cost of insurance.
Okay, so if any members of the board want to attend the county Commissioners' meeting, that'll be over in Goffstown, on Mast Road, at the county seat, or whatever you want to call it, county complex, yeah. Anything, any questions on that? Okay. Anything else, Jason?
The only other comment I want to bring out is that the road improvements that we've talked about are going kind of fast and furious now. There's patching on Ness and Keg today. We expect, with the exception of Mike, most of the rest of the work will be done within the next week or two. I know Jack is trying to make sure that the work on McKellin is done this week, taking advantage of it being school vacation week. Mike, in terms of the Mike Lane project, Jack and our engineer met with the residents of Mike Lane last week to discuss that road work and to get some additional insight about drainage issues. Jack's sense was the meeting was helpful, and there were a few adjustments that they're going to make to the plans. So that project is the much bigger project, so we expect that that will be later this
Okay. Selectmen reports, are there any selectmen reports?
I have none, Mr. Chair.
Kevin? There was a Budget Committee hearing last week. There were several questions asked by the Budget Committee. I provided Jason with those questions, mostly dealing with, one was ambulance and bad debt. The other one was dealing with what is our expected run rate in terms of bad debt going forward for ambulance on a year-to-year basis. The Budget Committee was told that the default budget information had been loaded into the spreadsheets that they're currently getting on a week-to-week basis for the reports, the budget reports, that are going out to selectmen, department heads, as well as Budget Committee Anything else on that? Items moved from consent? There is no items moved from consent, no other business for the board. Mr. Garrett, you seem to be having ants in your seat, or whatever?
Well, that's my normal situation. May I just approach much more before you close?
Yes, you can.
As I was sitting there, going through what you told me, is there indeed an attorney's opinion, or was it just that you, because you share an attorney who had a similar, you know...
There is no attorney's opinion for the town.
Okay.
As I said before, Mr. Hope had gotten those opinions when he was in other positions for other towns.
Sure, I just didn't know if there was an actual one, but, and then finally...
And it's the same attorney that we use for Litchfield today.
Certainly. And just one last thing for, from the New Hampshire Municipal Association. Question is, instead of purchasing the truck outright, can the town enter into a lease-purchase agreement to acquire a truck? The answer, yes. The governing body, which would be you all, may enter into a lease of equipment as required by the municipality, RSA 33:7E. If the lease includes a non-appropriation clause, which ours does for the Cruisers, also known as the escape clause, the appropriation to fund the lease may be approved by a simple majority of the voters, which we have not had yet. In this case, voters authorize the selectmen to enter into a lease agreement and vote to appropriate one year, and that's again, if they choose to do so in the operating budget, one year, for a simple majority. Subsequent years' lease payments can then be included in the operating budget, which would then require an approval, or in a separate warrant article. If voters in future years fail to appropriate the funds necessary to make the lease payments, the equipment is returned and the town has no further obligation. On the other hand, if the lease does not contain the escape clause, it creates a debt obligation on the part of the town and subject to Chapter 33 of the Municipal Finance Act, requiring two-thirds ballot vote of the annual or special town meeting, three-fifths in an official ballot referendum town. So again, I just, I understand the position of the board. I respectfully present that there are many opinions that state that we are not currently doing it correctly, and it's just a matter of opinion. It would certainly be, and I understand it's the same attorney, but it would be certainly advantageous, in my opinion, if the board got an actual opinion on it based upon what the municipal, the New Hampshire Municipal Association believes the law says, because they've got a bunch of attorneys that believe it to be a different way. Rather than, you know, this go any further than it need to, let's just get some opinions. And that's up to you guys, really. But it's clear...
That's right.
Yeah, you're right, Mr. Lemire. It's up to you guys to go solicit other opinions.
It's up to us if we're comfortable with it or not.
No, sir.
It's up to, if we're comfortable with the opinions that have been given to us.
Absolutely, absolutely. Right, right. Yeah, absolutely. If you're comfortable with that opinion, that's right. I wasn't arguing that. I was just saying, as I thought, such conflicting opinion would require an official opinion as my opinion as a citizen. But you guys can do whatever you please, obviously. So have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Chairman, I'll make a motion to go into non-public session. Per RSA 91-A:32I, pending litigation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion as second. This by roll call vote. Mr. Lemire?
Yes.
Mr. Bor?
Yes.
Mr. Byron votes, yes. This will be the end of our meeting. We will only come out of the non-public session to adjourn. Thank you for tuning in tonight, and we will see you, what's the next date of our meeting, Jason?
Hold on.
May 7?
No. Nope.
May 12.
May 12.
May 12, then. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, have a good evening.